Okay, welcome everyone to the committed the hall for the District of Squamish for Tuesday, June 1st. Alan Squam, Quist, Lipton, Squamish, Moi Moi. I am councillor Chris Peddingle, acting mayor for the month of June. Before we start, you may notice we're wearing a lot of orange shirts and we have an Every Child Matters banner up at one of the blocks here. You know, I think many in our community are grieving and we can see from the posts and what's on media that the news out of Kamloops is really impacting our neighbors, our friends and our families. And our hearts go out to everyone reliving the painful memories. But we're also heartened by the determination of strength we see for people to make things better. So we're wearing our orange shirts and we have lowered our flags to acknowledge that these 215 children really matter and how we act in response matters. I just wanted to take that little pause to acknowledge that news and and the work ahead. We will be, the mayor will be taking some time out of the evening to speak a little more about this. With that, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mayor Elliott moves, councillor Ray seconds. Anyone opposed? Seeing no one opposed, that's carried. Next is ministerial order M192. That pursuant to ministerial order M192, the District of Squamish is excluding in-person public attendance at this June 1st meeting on the basis that all public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. And the district is ensuring openness, transparency and accessibility and accountability at this meeting by the following means. It is being livestreamed and the video of this meeting will be available on the district website within a reasonable basis. I have someone do that please. Mayor Elliott and councillor Anderson seconds. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, just remind people of the electronic policy. When a councillor member disconnects or reconnects or enters the meeting, please let the chair know so that this can be recorded in minutes. Councillor members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair that they wish to be on the speaker's list. With respect to a vote, you're only required to state a may vote. Please put your computer or telephone on mute unless you wish to speak. Everyone is expected to be involved in the meeting. Please text the chief administrative officer or the pervert officer if you're having technical difficulties with your monitor computer and we will recess the meeting for perhaps 10 minutes if the technical difficulty is on our side. So with that out of the way, our first order of business is an affordable housing update and we go to Mr. Buxton for that.
Thank you very much councillor Peddingle and councillor. Today, we have an update on the housing organization work that we've done moving towards the Housing Society. We also have two members of our consulting team from Macaulay Development Services, Sandy McKay and Katie Fabris, who are in the meeting as well. I'll give Sandy a couple of minutes now to load up the PowerPoint presentation that he'll be running from his end. We'll share the presenting duties. But this was really the work around the first goal under the strategic plan, housing affordability and diversity priority area. And that's towards this organizational and today we'll outline that move towards a society. The last time that council saw this information or met with Katie and myself would have been July of last year. So we've been delayed a little bit for the obvious reasons in getting to this point. But today hopefully we'll we'll move the conversation forward a little bit. So the next slide please Sandy. So our objectives today, so we're moving towards the establishment of an affordable housing society. We're not we're not there yet, but that's the direction we're proposing. So we'll give you some general directions, some general details and proposed scope and activities. But today we don't need to make any firm decisions. The details do not need to be decided today. We just need to make sure before we before we go down this path is that we're on we're on indeed on the right path. And so it's a bit of a check in and it's a bit of a bit of an opportunity to allow council to look at the general directions, details and scope that we've got. I'll turn it over to Sandy and Katie at this point for a few slides.
Great, thanks Gary. So today, hi again, everyone. My name is Sandy Mackey. I'm the Housing Research and Policy Lead here at Macaulay Development Services. I'll be joined by my colleague Katie Fabris for the rest of this presentation. And today we're going to go over a few different things. First and foremost, we'll we'll give you a bit of background on the project which began quite a long time ago. And this is just the latest phase. We'll also be looking at some of the latest phase that we did on this exact this, you know, discrete project, looking at that nonprofit engagement which started in the fall of 2020. We'll be looking at the proposed Squamish Housing Organization. A full description of what we've got is available in your packages, but we'll we'll go over some of the four key function as well as the membership structure. Gary will talk a bit about the budget of the organization and the impact of the new organization on the District of Squamish and towards the strategic goal. And finally, we'll touch in on some next steps. So quickly, you know, this project is is part is the only the latest phase of an ongoing effort to address affordable housing across the District of Squamish. Sort of the the inciting project that has led to this was the Housing Task Force, which was established in May of 2016. On that Housing Task Force was representatives from the District of Squamish Council, Squamish Nation, the nonprofit sector, as well as the private sector, who all developed together 12 actionable recommendations to help address housing. The need for an affordable housing program and for an identity to coordinate and implement that housing emerged out of that initial recommendation. That moved on to the Affordable Housing Program Development, which took place in September of 2018. That provided some of the initial direction and foundational policy for the program. It also laid out the comprehensive affordable housing policy and the perpetually affordable housing policy or PAH policy that is sort of in process and working now across your district. One of the key recommendations from that was a further exploration into some sort of Squamish Housing Organization. And that's kind of where we're coming to now. In February of 2019, there was an Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan, which I identified through a needed demand analysis and a comprehensive affordable housing toolkit. Actually went through and analyzed four different potential models for a Squamish Housing Organization. The two that came out at the top were were almost tied, were the Municipal Housing Corporation and a nonprofit housing organization. They were tied during that model after weighting the scores. The Municipal Housing Corporation did come out ahead, but a few things have changed since that last recommendation. And we'll go into that as to why we're recommending this specific mechanism.
Thank you. I'll just give council a brief sort of look inventory about where we're at with affordable housing in the community right now and purpose-built rental, which is perhaps the purpose-built rental on the chart here is not strictly affordable in in every sense of the word, but at least it's somewhat indexed to local incomes and the affordable housing unit. So we have sort of between around 400. But as as we've noted, the the top one, the seaters, the manor is slated to close with the opening of the West Winds project. So we have just over 300 affordable housing units and 40 new purpose-built rentals in the community at present. In terms of the future or pending, that's either under construction at the building permit or development permit stage. We've listed those on the right-hand side. So we can look at they're about pending coming up in the next few years, about 700 purpose-built rental and affordable housing units. Noting that again, the West Winds project there is 70 is lost off of that total. I mean, that this is a reflection of the of some of the work that's been done as part of the community amenity contribution policy and asking developers to contribute to the affordable housing problem in turn. So it's had an impact. Two of the projects, the Buckley project and the West Winds, we've partnered with nonprofits to to get those over the start line and they're now substantially into construction. But imagine traveling to try and build 300 housing units as a municipality. It's a significant take on. So the process that we've undergone while it's been slow has has had a substantive impact in terms of housing units. So adding them up plus or minus 1,000 units now and in the near future of about 9,000 plus or minus units in the community. Back to you.
Thanks Gary. So the last time we spoke was in phase one of this project. That's where we came to you. We presented a bit on council direction and we got some directed feedback from you on where should we should be taking this project. A couple of really important pieces emerged from that conversation. The first is around control. One of the key benefits of a corporation model is that the district can remain in control of the organization and the assets that organization controls. So when we came to you at that first phase, we asked, is control of the units and the organization a priority for you? And what came back to us was a resounding no. We've we learned that in fact, in many ways, an arms-length model would be preferred and that there's actually a lot of benefit to the community of council and the district being involved, but not controlling the housing organization that is formed. So keeping housing an apolitical function. And that really impacts a lot of other pieces too. There's some concerns around borrowing. So the the district has concerns about its debt load and borrowing capacity for other capital projects. Depending on the way we set this organization up. Again, we're working through this with staff and with district resources to to confirm that this organization will either have a smaller impact on your borrowing and debt load ceiling or no impact. We'll have more details for you later in the process. And then finally, another big piece that came out of this was, you know, the duplication of resources was not necessary. There are already many nonprofits doing this work within your community. Gary pointed out a number of those units in that inventory slide. And really what we want to make sure we're doing is is heightening and leveraging those assets that already exist rather than duplicating them, because that is just not an efficient use of of the limited resources within the district. So for those reasons, we sort of left that meeting. We reconstructed our our models and and did another sort of analysis. And we decided to move forward with a different sort of proposal for our nonprofits to look at. They did look at the corporation model as well as the nonprofit-led model. And throughout this phase two, which is the nonprofit housing table, we discussed the benefits of each as well as how they would like to be involved. One thing that really definitely came out of that is that it was essential to work with these nonprofit community partners. They currently operate all of the affordable housing stock within the District of Squamish and doing many of the same things that we're trying to do with this Squamish Housing Organization. But then again, as Gary pointed to you, engagement during this time was challenging. COVID-19 limited a lot of our meeting ability and the capacity of some of our partners who were dealing with more acute issues with their tenants and with their projects. One partner completed and commissioned a brand-new building during this project, which is very exciting, but limits their ability to participate in and contribute to to meetings and other parts of this. And they also operate an interim housing project, two other sort of major construction pieces. And so engagement really took place at a time of great strain on their resources and their time. We appreciate and are immensely grateful for the time they were able to give us. It was an incredibly rewarding and impactful experience. And I think what we came out of it with is is a really useful product that will contribute to the district and over the long haul. But we could not have done it without them and we really appreciate their time. The engagement took the form of a workshop plus a series of meetings. We held a fairly large workshop at the beginning and then eventually settled into a monthly meeting pattern, which which worked really well. We discussed the vision of the district, so the things that the district needed to see in the Squamish Housing Organization. We discussed nonprofit housing in Squamish. So what do the nonprofits need to need to see represented in the organization in order for them to participate? We talked about the alignment of the district and the nonprofit providers' goals, looking at that sort of vision and mandate that was approved by council and discussing where nonprofits could contribute or see themselves represented in that vision and mandate. And finally, we looked at some of the gaps in terms of what services the nonprofits just aren't able to get to and the opportunities for efficiencies. So where can the Squamish Housing Organization be effective? And where can it heighten the resources that already exist and make a lot of things more efficient for both the nonprofit and the District of Squamish? So what came out of that was that there's general support for the Squamish Housing Organization from the nonprofit agencies. However, there was some hesitancy to provide financial support to the Squamish Housing Organization unless the organization is able to demonstrate its effectiveness. So that financial support will be contingent on effective service delivery. One piece that they really recommended is that we start small. We demonstrate the value of the organization and then we scale up. So looking at a suite of core key functions to for the first few years and then ramping up those functions into full operations over the course of a five-ish year period. And we've actually prepared a five-year plan that will hopefully guide those first five years of the organization. Some of the initial key functions, which my colleague Katie will talk about later in more detail, are the coordinated access piece. So looking at collective teneting practices and making sure that tenants who are in need of a unit are placed in the unit that is operated by the most appropriate organization in the most appropriate place for them. Looking at things like a unified waitlist and an application process. This is huge. This is a single point of access to all of affordable housing in the District of Squamish. That really makes things easier for everyone. Assisting with unified procurement. So if, you know, everyone needs to mow their lawn, how do we get together to procure the the cheapest possible service? And can we make that service cheaper by collectively bargaining with providers? And then a few additional items which are outlined in your in your package and we can go over in more detail later on if you'd like. And then I'm going to pass it over to Katie to go over a bit more of those four key functions and take on the last couple of slides here before passing back to Gary.
Great. Sandy, hi, everyone. So based on that conversations that we've had with the nonprofit sector and the information that we received from you last July, four key functions for this organization essentially emerged. So those being service and delivery coordination. So this is related to the items that Sandy was speaking of related to collective procurement, collective waitlist management. So it's about that coordination component. Strategic implementation of housing goals within the district is the second key function. So that would include items related to development. So assisting in the development of new affordable housing, strengthening applications for funding of new affordable housing. And then eventually a long-term goal might include leading the development of new affordable housing in the district as well. The third key function being monitoring and research. So this could be items related to the province's requirements for housing needs, reporting or additional research that's required, homeless counts, those kinds of items. And then finally, education and advocacy. So being that body that's really making affordable housing front and center in the community, advocating for changes to affordable housing and ensuring that the community is well-educated on the topic. We we took a look at sort of what the immediate goals of this organization could look like. So as Sandy spoke about, we sort of proposed, based on some nonprofit advice, a bit of a ramp up to sort of full operation. So these were some high-level goals that we looked at for years one through three. So obviously that would include some of those startup items like establishing a board and administrative protocols, hiring staff. So at this point, we're looking that by the end of year three, there'd likely be two staffs. So an executive director and or a housing planner. Establishing broader organizational presences and making sure that the purpose of the organization is advertised. So that relates to that education advocacy item. And then delivering meaningful services to the participating nonprofits. So some of the items that this included and were based on some of the gaps that the nonprofits had identified, based on their just general workload, included establishing an online presence for this organization to be that single point of entry and assist with coordinated access, meaning that all the nonprofits could come together to identify what unit a specific tenant might be best suited to move into. Collective procurement, which Sandy touched on, and then some of the key sort of goals that the nonprofits talked about, things that they were trying to get going but just couldn't, based on all the other work that they're all doing, like side of the desk projects essentially, that this organization could take on and really push to advance their to advance housing in the community, included collective policy developments. That could be things related to teneting, software acquisition to assist in in property management and then vulnerability assessment. So all items that that the nonprofits are trying to work together to get done and it's just not happening because there's so much else happening. So we took a look at what membership might look like. So this is sort of an initial stat of what that might be. Essentially, we're looking at an initially appointed by council board for this organization, which would be comprised of six to 10 members, including the founding nonprofit. So a member from each of those societies, a member of Squamish Nation, some members of the public at large with relevant experience, be that legal, real estate, development. And then someone, people with lived experience, so residents of affordable housing within the district as a sort of a key component to that too. We'd look at rotating appointments to ensure that there was always continuity across the board. And then district staff would sit in an advisory capacity and there'd be an opportunity for council to sit in an advisory capacity as well. Gary.
Mr. Buxton. Mr. Buxton, your.
Yes, I I will learn this sometime soon. So. So in terms of a budget or financial impact or outlook in the immediate term is as services and roles grow, we really want to have the the organization, the society grow towards financial independence and sustainability. In terms of how we've built the budget, initially in years one to two through the ramp up, that gives us reduced staffing and expense staffing and expenses. The goal being to demonstrate value to the community and the nonprofits, the cost of which is in and around the area of $82,000. We currently spend on the Affordable Housing Program at present around $75,000 a year. So from that point of view, in the initial one to two years, the impact is is not that significant. In future years, yes, it's going to get more significant. The funding sources likely in the near term are direct contributions from the district. There may be opportunities if if services are delivered in the way that they want for financial contributions from the nonprofits. We modeled how that could happen. It could be in-kind contributions or grant funding from other levels of government as well as potential funding sources through the years. In terms of the organizational impact, there is going to be a lessened workload for for staff inside the district. That's not the target here. The second one is the what we are going to see is the effectiveness and scope of those programs are better because they're dedicated resources that focus only on that. It's less incidental and off the side of someone's desk. So we'll get better support for the priority area of housing affordability and diversity. And incidentally, or coincidentally, we're getting support for opportunities opportunities to collaborate and partner with community groups in in quite a detailed way.
Great. So and just to kind of go over the next steps of this project, as Gary said, this is not the time for final decisions. You will have an opportunity to review this again, say at least one more time before we finalize everything. Throughout the summer and fall of 2021, we will be doing things like legal review of the Articles of Incorporation. We'll be going out and doing some dedicated board recruitment as well as finalizing a council-approved Articles of Incorporation, which will go on to be the sort of foundational document for the organization. In fall of 2021 and maybe winter of 2022, that draft five-year plan will go to the Squamish Housing Organization Board for approval. And hopefully, we will have that first meeting of the board, at which point the consulting team will step back. The district can step back and resume its advisory role and the organization will go on its own, is the plan.
So we're at the end of the the formal part of the presentation. Hopefully, council was had a chance to review the the supporting report. But the key questions that we'd like council to consider in in its deliberations is around key functions being missing. Are the key functions that are there that council don't think should be there? Is the board makeup appropriate? Getting back to that level, desired level of independence, we're suggesting that there is a a very high level of independence from council and that it operates very independently. And then are the proposed goals and the budget ramp up reasonable options to consider? I mean, essentially, are we on the right path? I think at that point, we will wrap the the presentation and entertain questions or council's comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buxton. I see councillor Race and Mayor Allen.
Thank you. Yeah, this actually raised a lot of questions. Generally speaking, I think this is the right way to go. And I'm happy with the choice of between the options. But reading through the report, it did raise some questions for me. If I read it correctly, and one is with respect to the long term. You know, read the paragraph, it's on page six of 20 at the top. As a group by accumulating affordable housing units to manage and demonstrates the benefits to the nonprofit agencies, the aim is to then assume under service agreement, some are all the following functions from the local nonprofits. Tenant management, property management, asset management, financial management. And so that raised some questions for me. And and first of all, the existing nonprofits have, to some extent, more or less, depending on which one, they provide supportable housing as well as affordable. And so the question for me was whether this housing society should get into the supportable role or stay with the affordable role. Because from my perspective as a layperson, the supportable role requires just kind of a different skill set. And do we want to go down that road? And I interpreted that, what I just read out to you, as suggesting that one day we might get into the supportable role. And and related to that is when you talk about one point of entry for the various nonprofits, who makes the assessment of which type of housing a particular person should go to? What are their particular needs and which which might satisfy that best? Is that the expertise that we expect to acquire? Is our person going to have those skills or is he going to he or she going to be more of a property manager? So I'll I'll start with that and and maybe get some answers to that.
Sure. I'll I'll field the first part of that question in terms of the supportive housing. And I'll let Sandy or Katie address the second part of the question. In terms of the that statement around assuming new functions, what we're effectively talking about at that point in time is that there is some form of amalgamation or between those two societies at some form. So those, if they're if it's supportive housing, those functions and those revenue streams come with that form of amalgamation. So we we grow by function, but then those two societies would then be collaborating in quite closely in some form. We we did discuss this and at this point, none of the societies are at the point that they can they can discuss a merger or an amalgamation. But that's where that ends up when those sorts of functions emerge between the societies.
When you talk about amalgamation, are you talking like a formal amalgamation, just roll the other society into this or vice versa?
At the extreme, through the chair, at the extreme end of yes, it it could potentially be be that that sort of formal amalgamation.
And bring the skill set with it that's required to do with that.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Thank you. I have other things later on. I'll I'll step aside. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, I think Sandy or Katie can address the second part of your question.
Sure. Through the chair to councillor Race, the second part of your question about how that single point of access would work, especially if we're looking at sort of that broad spectrum of affordable housing. One of the key items that the nonprofit sector talked about was vulnerability assessment tools, which are essentially tools that the nonprofits would use to determine where a person best fits on sort of that that spectrum of housing and what type of housing makes the most sense for them. So between that and the coordinated access table being sort of a formalized group of the nonprofits, looking at what units were available and where a specific tenant falls within some of those tools to assess where they are. That's sort of how we would look at at putting someone in the right place. So we'd be leaving on the expertise of the partners in the community.
Thank you. I'll go to Mayor Elliott. Councillor French and councillor Anderson.
Okay, so just want to revisit this, the implications between a society and a corporation are not different and that both the impact of district and debt and borrowing. And can we get a reminder of why that is and what impact would that have?
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Elliott. I didn't catch the end of that question.
In terms of the impact, whether it's a society or a corporation, what is the impact to us in terms of debt and borrowing? Why isn't there a difference between going with a society law or corporate law?
In terms of through the chair seeking some, we we were, we started this process with the understanding that societies and corporations had different impacts. In terms of seeking some professional advice in the in the last few weeks, there have been some case law decided and and some direction provided, I think, by the public sector accounting board. But has perhaps shifted the landscape such that it appears now that between corporation and society that there actually is no difference in terms of the impact on the district's balance sheet or or debt load. Both would be consolidated into our financial statements and have the same consequential effect. Did that answer the question?
But given given everything in our real estate and facilities master plan, this hinders our ability.
Yes, if if that if the society takes on debt, it would it would potentially impact how that happens. Yeah.
Okay, but if it pursued a different model of of developing housing through partnering with developers and using rents from local government or sorry, from senior lots of government, it wouldn't have it.
I think that question might better be answered by Ms. Boxer.
Please go ahead.
I hate to put her on the spot.
No problem. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so exactly what what Gary was saying is, so you know, if we can, if we can, and there's further investigation to be applied here. But we can keep the corporation or society at an arm's length. There is the potential that it'll be off balance sheet and will not need to be required or consolidated into our financial statements. If that's the case, then it will not affect our debt load. However, from what we're seeing, if it becomes a municipal society or municipal corporation, there is no difference there. It's not arms length enough and then it is consolidated. So in terms of our real estate and financial or real estate and facilities master plan, absolutely, that would be an impact if that those corporations were not at arm's length enough to not consolidate. Then we would have that on our balance sheet. That would be our debt load as well. So that is something that we're working through and trying to understand the best course of action at this time.
I may add something to that. I think what we're pursuing in that regard is a society in which this a staff member and council sits ex officio as in an advisory role, non voting. And that the board is appointed initially by by council and then subsequent boards are selected by the society itself. That gives us potentially a true arms length society and that may keep them quote off balance sheet. I think that's what we're pursuing at this point in time.
So, Mr. McKay. Did you all respond? No. In this staff report, it talks to Cedar Sky Community Services not being ready to operate fully. And they have concerns regarding potentially creating a competitive regime between the nonprofit with respect to funding sources. Can you elaborate on how that would play out if we follow this direction?
Ye- yes, through the chair, I can I can take that one. What we were looking at in terms of pages, pages seven and eight of the of the incorporation articles, the draft incorporation articles lists a number of potential funding options. There was a concern expressed that some of the ones on page eight, the potential sources of project funding are sources of funding that the nonprofits use to fund their operations. So I think we would look to that those sources for for project funding and not for operational funding so that we don't have that. We don't create a competitive regime.
Okay, and then my final question for now is there's no mention here of using MRDT funding to help fund this organization. And yet we are allowed to use MRDT now with affordable housing. I know Tepino is doing that. And also our rental housing fund is not mentioned here. All we have been putting funds into that over the years through CECs, where people pay cash and lose. So I'm curious why those two funding sources haven't been explored as a way to keep this out of the taxpayers' fault.
Through the through the chair in response. Yes, the MRDT is a bit of a is a bit of a miss. That is an option. We can add that into the the funding media. In terms of the affordable housing reserve, I think that would be best used for project funding and perhaps as a startup fund. But I don't think we would want to use that in an ongoing basis. I think that would get consumed relatively quickly. But certainly on a if we wanted to kickstart it and and then cease that or fund projects. And I certainly think that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. I have Counsel French, Anderson, Stoner, and then back to Race. Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. So I think somewhat indirectly, my questions have already somewhat been answered through the mayor's questions. But I'm going to press ahead because it it comes from a slightly different angle. So first of all, I'll say that I do support that the direction we're going and the direction that's outlined in the report. And so some of the feedback that I've seen had me wondering about how big we go at launch. And the vision in the documents, it sets out the notion of the organization not being directly involved in building anything. And so that probably ties into the notion of start small, demonstrate value and then scale up. So maybe in the future, the organization is involved directly in development and building things. So one of our residents who is is very tied into this and very knowledgeable was asking about this notion of the organization actually building units. So what's stopping us from going in that direction?
Mr. Buxton?
Through the chair. That was a bit of an oversight on our part. And we tried to correct that with with the presentation as Katie noted. It's certainly part of what it was so obvious to us that we haven't, we literally just forgot to make it explicit in the document. We certainly need to bring that forward. It's certainly the intent that opportunities come available or if they can be identified that this organization, the society would be leading those development projects. It's going to struggle in the first two years on a capacity basis, but to do that. But once it's up and running, it certainly could and should be doing that function. And we can certainly make that more explicit.
Yeah, okay, great. Actually, that sort of erases the follow up question that I had. So thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Anderson and Counsel Stoner.
Thank you. I will follow up with the line of questioning Counsel French was pursuing. We have in past discussions in passing reflected on the need for need that we should already be looking at the next project. Already be looking at the next partner or piece of land or circumstances to take advantage of for the next project five, six, seven years from now. And so I'm coming back to the question and I and I do like Mr. Buxton's response that we could make this function of strategic planning and identifying and taking on the next project perhaps a little bit more explicit in the document. There is a coordinate reference to new housing projects. I'm looking at the slide that Katie Fabris had. If I can have it in front of me, but is referenced to new developing new housing. Maybe we could be more explicit. We have also in the past in in these discussions mentioned the fact that maybe this isn't the right thing for the district staff to be doing at this time. And that we we can may due to time constraints and and other matters. But I think that we do need that strategic function. And I think that there are potential partners and lands out there now that that a arms length organization should pursue. Perhaps I'm making a comment on that particular topic and would suggest more explicit language about that strategic role of looking for the next housing project, the next piece of land, the next partner, whether it's church property, new developer to town and what have you. Chair, I do have a follow a next another question on another matter.
Sure, it's a question.
Thank you. Rental market data, monitoring of rental market data, the language in the proposed plan for for the organization under monitor and research to coordinate research and analysis to assess needs and gaps in the district. We have we have also under the short and medium and long term goals, the establishment of a housing data portal as a project for year four and five. My question is, perhaps to Mr. Buxton, thinking about the experience of our planning department over the last two years, they might have, and I'm not sure how onerous this has been, devoting substantial time to market data research in the short term rental field. And certainly, we have paid a lot of attention to the information they provided in the reports on that initiative. But what role is there in the short term for this organization to be doing more comprehensive rental market data collection and monitoring?
Through the chair right now, most of the rental market data, there there isn't much, if any, rental market data. I think the first thing to do is design a a data collection scheme. And I think this housing, the housing society would be well set up to do that. We have decent information on the nonprofit housing rental data, but that that's not what we need to know. What we need to know is get an inventory of units and know where those price points on the rental units, the market rental units. We don't have any data on that and it's not something we could do our staff at this point in time.
Would you see that this would come under the description to coordinate research and analysis? And the new organization could examine this further as to that scheme, that data collection scheme?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I'll have a comment for later.
Okay, thanks. I saw Mr. McKay's handbook.
Yeah, through the chair, just to follow up on that. So one of the key sources of rental data that we do have access to and that every community over the threshold for research has access to, it's about ten thousand people, is the CMHC Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation Rental Data Portal. That's the only place that we have access to. It collects perp data on purpose built or primary rental stock, which is typically in apartment buildings, typically apartment buildings with more than four units. That's great in lots of communities and it does give you a good example of where some of that data can come from. But the most sort of obscure or oblique rental data comes from the secondary market. That is actually where most of your residents access rental housing. The secondary market is people renting out suites. It's, you know, three people who are students or younger folks sharing a house. It's that type of unit and it's very, very difficult to get data on that. The only place we have is through all of those websites like Use Victoria or here in Victoria, it's Use Victoria or Kijiji or or Facebook Marketplace, things like that. If this organization has just a really easy thing for you to visualize as a task kind of in year one or year two, set up the methodology for tracking those secondary market sites. And every month, task someone with going through them the same way and recording how many three bedrooms are available at which price points? How many two bedrooms are available at which price points? Just keeping that all together in one place. Then when it comes time to do your housing needs assessments again, you've got that source of data right there and it's easily accessible. And that's something no other municipality has access to unless they're putting dedicated resources to it. So that is just a really, it's a good question and it's a good way to illustrate some of the utility of having that function built into that third party organization that can prioritize that type of research as part of its mandate.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner and Counsel Racing, Counsel Herford.
Thank you. Through the chair, my first question is in line with those from Mayor Elliott in terms of if there isn't really a huge amount of financial difference in terms of creating this as a nonprofit versus a corporation. Does that kind of, would that change our previous kind of weighted benefit pro con list in terms of how we establish this?
Through the chair. No, it wouldn't. It wouldn't. Well, no, it may, given the new information, it may change the way that we evaluated the the society versus the corporation in that prior study. It it probably would. Having said that, we think we want to pursue the society model, essentially the independent society model for two reasons. One, which is we think through true independence, we can likely keep them off balance sheet. The second one is if we're going to collaborate, coordinate and at some point potentially amalgamate with the nonprofit operators in in the community, they're all societies. It's going to be far easier to do that with a society to society basis than a corporation to society basis. For that reason, the assessment might change, but the recommendation probably wouldn't.
All right. And then my other question is just in terms of the the leading on the development of new affordable housing, both in the rental space. But we've also talked about how we move towards creation of affordable home ownership. And that to me is kind of the like that that end of the spectrum is the piece that's really missing. I appreciate that there's coordination support that would be really valuable on the other end of the affordability spectrum. But do we envision that as the discussions have occurred to date that this sort of organization could push and lead that development and the partnerships that are needed to develop affordable home ownership options?
Through the chair, yes, that's certainly a function that we could make explicit. It's going to be down the road for the simple fact that we need to have units that we that we have title to. So it's not a, it's probably not a one, one through, one through year three. At best, it would be a year three through five program. But yes, if that's going to land somewhere, it's going to land with the society.
Thank you. That's it for now, Chair.
Okay, Counsel Race and Counsel Herford.
Thank you. Mr. Buxton, the the units that we have in in stream, more or less, like Buckley Avenue, for example, and and some of the private units that are coming from developers. So first of all, with the developers, our right to manage them, I take it is contained in the housing agreements. I can't remember line for line what they say. But where do we get the right to manage those units that come to us from developers or do we?
At this point in time, we're crafting the housing agreement to the housing agreements to make that mandatory. So you do have to manage through us. We are working through with legal counsel whether or not we can actually do that. But we're going to try and make it as attractive as possible that those units are managed through the society and not self managed by the developer.
And with Buckley Avenue, does, because we have a long term lease with BC Housing for that site. And do they in turn give us the right to manage or do they have the right to manage?
No, Buckley, through the chair, on the Buckley project, we have a lease with Cedar Sky Community Services, who is operating that project on operating agreement with BC Housing. We have simply leased the land to Cedar Sky Community Services.
Okay, and the operating agreement then is in return for funding?
Yes, Cedar Sky must operate those units in in accordance with the with the program that funds funds that that building through BC Housing.
So if we set up this society and we wanted to generally manage the affordable housing stock, we would be assigning them whatever rights we have or sub leasing in some cases perhaps to them on terms that we could negotiate with them. we would be assigning them whatever rights we have, or subleasing in some cases perhaps, to them on terms that we could negotiate with them. Would that be a more or less accurate statement, or could we work towards a goal like that?
Yes, those units, and I've touched on it in the report, is those units, when we manage by the society through a partnering agreement.
By the new society?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, Chair. I'll have comments, but I'll step aside for now. Thank you.
I have Counselor Herford and myself and Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. And thank you for all, to my fellow counselors, for all the great questions so far. It's really advanced the conversation. And my question is, is kind of going back to this piece of this organization driving development and building, and building new units. And Mr. Buxton, the ownership piece, you said three to five. We're thinking maybe two years is sort of the term, was the timeframe for the, we thought we might be able to get on, make that happen for, as far as the building goes, of the rental units. What, is it, is it just an, just by the nature of the functions this organization needs to perform, that it'll take that long before we get there? Or is it a budget, I mean, is it a budget-driven issue? Or are there steps that need to be, to be taken, like, that would earn maybe the buy-in of other, of the other societies? Like, what's the, what sort of put, is in charge that timeline? What's the main driver of that timeline?
We don't have any, through the chair, we don't have any units that we can sell to other people. Is the principal block.
Right. No, I meant, sorry, the, the bit, the sort of taking on that, that function of finding the next project and trying to get some shovels into ground. I understand the ownership piece, that's fine.
Sorry.
I asked the question in the longest form possible. I'm sorry for that.
No, I, I don't think there's any reason that we couldn't assign that role in year one. Now, appreciating that if you've got a society that's brand-new and trying to get its feet under it, and work on a coordinated access, and work on a new project, that's a tall ask. Now, that may mean that if we want to do that, we might have to ramp the organization up a little faster, which is possible to do. We had originally envisaged this with no ramp-up, is straight in year one, we hire two FTEs, and we get this thing going right away. That may be what's required if we wanted to ensure that they had the capacity to do everything, including development in year one.
Right. I just, this whole process, I, I'm appreciative of all the work that it took to get us here, but I'm missing the urgency. So I'm looking to find what that spot is, that's the, that, what we can do to shorten it up. Because I think we need to see the effects of the work of the society, I don't know, maybe years ago. So I'd like to do whatever we can to shorten up the timeline. I do think we're going in the right direction. I appreciate the work so far. But I think we can do more, and I think I'd love to see it, see it happen sooner. So, but I know that a new organization isn't going to necessarily be its most effective, so, but that's where I am for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'll take a minute, just turn my head around. Like, when I look at the core functions of this proposed society, it seems a bit more to me like we're looking for management. It almost reads a bit more like a management contract to me than something where there's an independent society, with independent governance deciding what it's going to do. And, and so I take it there may be budget implications, and that's a driver for being arms-length. But it feels a bit to me like we're sort of not totally wedded to the idea of having this really quite independent organization. And so I guess, I guess I'm looking for, you know, do we think this could work with a little less specificity? Like, or could we be, I guess, give some more succinct prioritized outcomes in a briefer list and say, go run with it, and here's the budget we will allocate you? Or conversely to that, why would we, or did we approach some of the existing nonprofits and say, hey, the money that we're considering for this nonprofit, if we gave that money to you, would you be willing to take on these new tasks that are on this list?
The, let me try and work backwards through that list of questions then. Did we approach the nonprofits and ask, could they take some of these things on? No, because that's counter to what we were told, in this direction. That's sort of approaching the problem from the opposite direction we've approached it from. Is it an option? Yeah, we would need to dismantle the work we've done and come at it from the other direction. In terms of, could we, could we lessen the specificity here? Yes. I think the issue is, while it's independent, if there isn't that specificity, how do we maintain accountability if it's? Is that, we're trying to balance, that are we being clear about what we want it to, what we want it to do and being, not exhaustive, but providing a complete list of what we expect to get done? Could you rephrase that in a, in an outcome-based way? Yes, that just makes accountability a little tricky to manage, because it is going to be independent. We are deliberately setting it up to be independent, so can you give it some more freedom? Yes, you have to expect the accountability is a little less robust at that point then.
Okay, thank you. I guess maybe a way to rephrase what I'm trying to get at is, I guess, when I read through this, I'm wondering why we wouldn't just keep this in-house, at least in the shorter term, aside from the budget piece and the impact on our debt note? Because that seems to be the, to be the main issue at this point. I mean, politically, it seems we're still controlling the zoning, the CAC policy, the majority of the funding. So I think we still hold on to a lot of the political aspects of it. And so, I guess at the end of the day, just looking to make sure that whatever we move forward with is as efficient as possible. So maybe that is the question, is there something beyond, oh, I think we've lost this.
No, I can still hear you.
Is there something beyond the debt, the debt impacts that's really driving the need for an independent society?
Well, yeah, yes, I believe the intent was to deliberately have this at arm's length. If it operates inside the organization, it has to operate within the structures that we have for hiring. So staff would be part of the collective agreement, there would be unionized staff. All of those issues that don't exist with an arm's-length society. The political independence, if it's in-house and there are issues with affordable housing, people come to council to resolve those issues. We don't need council dealing with tenancy issues, that needs to be outside of this forum. So we're trying to provide that independence, both sort of politically and financially. And that's best done, we believe, through the society.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I'll go to Mayor Elliott, and then maybe go around, around the comments.
Can I have my question?
Yes, yeah. Sure.
So, I'm curious about why we would use this society to get in the middle of the relationship between nonprofits and the province on supportive housing? Because the way that operates is they get capital dollars to build, and then operating dollars to fund. And I can see how we would still manage their wait lists and making sure that the right person is getting home in the right service. But I don't understand why this society would take over or complicate that relationship that exists now. Vision points to core housing, but I believe supportive housing is in the realm of nonprofits, we're going to see.
Yes, Sandy can maybe help, but I don't believe it, the society would be getting, up until the point of an amalgamation, I don't believe that it would be getting into that relationship between the province and the nonprofits.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, I think you're correct, Gary. I mean, I don't think there's any intention to, to complicate that relationship between nonprofits and the province, or to act as like a middleman. I think that there is a chance that we, in 10 or 15 years, have to start having that conversation. Or when we're getting to that point where we're discussing full amalgamation, whenever that happens, I think the intention at the beginning is to start looking at taking on the responsibility for those affordable units that are operated low-end of market, and do not have supportive elements first, and start looking at those. But there may be a conversation that has some implications for those supported projects. But it would be, certainly would not be in the first few years of the process. And if that does happen, it would obviously be after intense conversation with the nonprofit providers and with the province, because those funding relationships are very important, and those operating agreements are longitudinal, right? Those are, we would not be able to do that without having thought it through first, and really taking our time to make that decision correctly. And probably, maybe even coming back to council or relying on council advice through those ex officio members of the board, or observers of the board.
Can I just do my?
Yeah, please.
So I'm just using the bullet points that were in your slide presentation. Should we still consider a corporation model? The thing for me, I'm, you know, I want to make sure we have the most flexibility on our financial statements to do the building that we need to do under the real estate facility master plan. I think the one thing that I'm still not clear on in this report is how we maintain that relationship between the priorities of the district and this housing corporation, so they're not suddenly working in two different directions. So how do we, is it through terms of reference that it needs to support the official community plan policy? Or do we actually put council members on the board? And can we do that, not in an executive capacity, but in a fully capacity? Can we do that without jeopardizing its independence? I don't know the answers to those, but it's still something, that connection between the district's long-term view and this housing corporation, I don't understand that that need. The key function, listening, I think my colleagues spoke to the need to really clarify that building stuff is a priority and building is completely for me, and being responsible for generating that next relationship, that next deal, I think needs to appear earlier in the timeline and be much more clear in the responsibilities of this organization. I've heard you say, Mr. Buxton, that it will struggle with capacity in the first few years. And I just really want to question that, I think this is a priority for this council and for the community. And I'd love for us to expand our thoughts about how we use the affordable housing reserve upfront and MRGT on an ongoing basis to make sure that we're not underfunding this in the first few years. And that we, we actually staff it to make it go with that development mindset in mind, and getting those purpose-built rentals under its control, so that it has rental income coming in to then stimulate its operation. I feel like that is really, really important in the early days, and that we should have the courage to fund it properly. Probably get the whole group of staff that needs. So I think we need to strengthen that up a little bit. I do, I struggle a bit around the functions, the vision, I guess it would be up to this, is it up to us to set the vision and the mission? And if so, it should be shorter and more succinct, they're kind of long still. But I think we need to take out all the reference to funding the entire housing sector. I think our organization has to focus on below-market affordable housing to homeownership. And then we facilitate with nonprofits that support housing. But I think we've got to focus, and our affordable housing passport said the same thing, we have to focus on that below-market that's not supportive, all the way to homeownership. So that has to be more clear to me, and it's the vision, the mission, and how we describe the rules for that vision. So that being said, I think the board needs to be more balanced between market specialists and the nonprofits. I think it's too skewed to the supportive housing side and not to the below-market, to market and up to homeownership. I think we need to balance that out a little bit when we think about the board makeup. And I think I already addressed the rules and what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you. It's great to see this come back, and I think there is a lot of really good and important work in there. But I just need to tighten it up and maybe strengthen and prioritize that development side.
Thank you. I'm just going to go around, if that's okay with everyone. Can we get the list of questions up on the screen? Is that possible? So I will go next to Counselor Anderson.
My question, or my comment will focus on the board membership issue. Currently, the proposal is for five organizations, and here I include the Squamish Nation, who are essentially supportive housing program managers, among other things, but this is what their forte and focus is. Then we have the district liaison. I would like to propose that consideration be given, enhanced consideration be given for private sector participation. By that, I mean individuals from the not only developer community, land development, but construction. During the period of the Housing Options Group from 2010, a big conference that was held here that launched that group, and they were active for four years, we did have, I was a member, representatives from both the construction and developer community. And pretty much, they did attend regularly. During that period of time, we had testimonial from Lois Wynn, the previous manager of Cedar Sky Community Services. And at that time, she was involved in developing Riverstones. Her testimonial on this topic was that she needed to and did learn a lot from the, about working with developers and from their experience. And so I suggest that some consideration be given to going beyond two or more members from a long list of categories, but give some attention to maybe at least one of those members come from the private sector, construction, and/or development community. And perhaps a step might be to canvas, say, the planning department's next, a network of people that you discuss policies with once in a while, and just canvas the idea with them. My experience is that we did not have difficulty finding folks that wanted to come out and participate. And after all, they are stakeholders, once we talk about our community amenity contribution policy and this sort of thing that might come into play. So this is my recommendation, increase consideration for private sector participation, and firm seat on the board from that sector in our vision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Counselor Race and then Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Now that we're into comments, I was actually going to put the staff recommendation forward as a motion, and I'll speak to it if it's seconded.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second there? That's a French second. Okay, please go ahead, Counselor Race.
Thank you. So first of all, on the question of whether or not this should be a company or a society, I think one of the key considerations is companies, I don't think typically qualify for CRA registration as a charity. And so the difference, the fundamental difference between a company and a society is a company is set up to make a profit and to distribute that profit down to its shareholders who invest in the company by way of dividends. And a society is not, there's no distribution. And as a society is not, there's no distribution allowed. Even if it makes a profit on some operation, there's no distribution allowed down to its members. So that's a fundamental difference and societies are typically the vehicle used for getting CRA numbers. And it's important to take that into consideration right on day one, because in my experience, CRA will insist on certain things being in the bylaws of the society. And if they're not there, then you have to go back and amend the bylaws, which is sometimes a bit of a process to get them in there before they'll consider the application for registration. And when you look at some of the potential donors that might come in, some of these are things like the Whistler Blackcomb Foundation, could be the Squamish Community Foundation, et cetera. And they very often typically actually can only donate monies to what are called qualified donies. In other words, people that CRA allows them to donate money to, they can hand money to somebody on the street. And to be a qualified donie, you have to be a municipality or a school board or something like that. Or you have to be a charity with a registration number. So it's going to be a critical part of future fundraising going forward. So I don't, in my mind, there's no no sense going down the corporate route, go down the society route. I think a lot of the issues that have come up in the questions are going to be raised around how this thing is set up. And I used to set these things up. That's what I, part of what I did as a lawyer. But I will warn you that the Societies Act in British Columbia underwent a major renovation about five years ago. And so that's, I'm not as familiar with that as I used to be. But societies, you know, have a board of directors like a company. And like a company, the board of directors are elected by the shareholders, although in societies they're called members of the society. So a critical thing will be who are the members? And if we want to give up control, then I think probably the district is not going to be a member. We will set the society up to be arm's length and to be truly arm's length. We don't have a director and we don't have a vote as a member. And for me, that's fine, because this housing thing is, from my perspective, not a core municipal function. I think we're in it because we have to be. And so to have an arm's length group take it over with some confidence is, for me, is perfectly fine. I think the question is control. Because inevitably, certainly at the startup phase, we are going to be putting money into it. Certainly, long-term, we'd hope it would be self-supporting, but there's no guarantee of that. But you can control things in a variety of different ways. And I don't want to start giving legal advice here, but that's why I was asking the question about how we have these rights to these units at all. But the units that we have control over from a management perspective or something, you can pass that on to a society by signing the lease, subleasing, assigning the management rights. And you can put criteria around that relationship. And you can put performance factors and you can have termination provisions. So if they go totally offside, then I think that's, that's the way we would actually control it to make sure that our long-term directives and our long-term goals are being met. When I tend to agree with Counselor Anderson, we would want people from the private sector on the board, among others, as well as representatives of nonprofits in the nation. In fact, there are right now with some of these, some of these societies, there are developers on it. But that leads you to a discussion about conflict of interest. And so the society's bylaws would have to have a very robust series of conflict guidelines that would make it very clear. And our legal counsel would probably tell us the same thing, but just so we're kind of getting our heads into the right place. Because it would be good to have somebody who's a builder and somebody who's a developer who really truly understands the nuts and bolts of these things to give that kind of advice. The debt portion. Oh, and the one other thing I'll say about directors is, and we went through this with the community foundation, when we set up Squamish Community Foundation, we provided in the bylaws that a director cannot serve more than two consecutive terms. And so if they, and there was a three-year terms in that case, so after six years, they have to step aside and somebody else comes in. And there's advantages to that. The thing we were trying to prevent was for some board to make it kind of their fiefdom. And so they start to take control and there's just no change and you don't have the ability to get new blood going in. Because in the community foundations case, the members are the directors. That is actually not as uncommon as it might sound. And so basically, they vote themselves in each year as a director or for additional terms, but you want to, at some point, you say enough volunteering for now and we'll get some new blood in there. So you have those types of controls over the actual management of the society. The debt thing, you know, we faced that issue with Buckley Avenue. And, and I'm hardly the person to give you advice on what debt ends up on our balance sheet or not. I mean, these rules continually surprise me. But I think we got away from it in Buckley Avenue, if I remember, because of mortgage. The district had to sign the mortgage because we are the landowner and the landowner always has to sign the mortgage. Unless it's a lease. And then BC Housing signed the covenant to pay because a mortgage is both things. It's a covenant to pay and it's also a charge against the land. And so we got away from that and we just didn't sign the covenant to pay. We were excluded from that particular feature of the mortgage. So there are ways around that, I think. I don't see any real deal stopper here. These things, these details can be worked out with legal counsel and, and looking at examples of other societies. Because we're not going into a new place here, there's lots of examples around. And whether we get to ownership or not, you know, if the society is properly incorporated and its objectives are broad enough to include ownership, just the word ownership goes in there. Then one day we might be in an ownership position, but it will largely, I think, depend on funding. And where to get it from, because it's pretty hard to raise the money to go out there and buy that stuff to turn around and transfer it off to somebody who's as a submarket, single-family house or something like that. So Whistler Blackcomb Foundation, or not Whistler Blackcomb, but the Whistler Housing Authority has gone through some of those things. I know in some cases they've done it with land that has been donated. I was part of a company that actually donated some at one point. And so, so they've been beneficiaries of a lot of that stuff. So going forward, I think it's really, there's nothing to prevent us from doing that except getting the resources together to actually make it happen. But generally speaking, I'm happy for staff to carry on in this path and and consultants, and thank you for that. I tend to agree generally with the decision of a nonprofit society. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner and then Counselor French.
Thank you. Through the chair, thanks to staff and our consultants for the work done on this state. It is great to see it come back. Definitely has been a high priority for this council and one's previous as well as our community. I'll just kind of go through the list of questions that you're seeking feedback on. So in terms of the corporation versus society model, I am kind of neither here nor there on them, given that I think the priority for me previously was that the sense was that the society was going to have less of a financial impact in terms of the district of Squamish and our ability to borrow debt in order to fund our real estate facilities master plan. That seems to be less so of an issue now. And so I think it does open up the door a little bit more to me in terms of the corporate corporation model. I take my council colleagues' comments. Counselor Race, in terms of the society model and the benefits of it being a charity, I had actually not considered this to be a charity. I thought we were just talking about it being under the BC Societies Act. So that's an interesting component to also consider whether this would go through a full charitable status and the implications thereof. Because that has its pros and its cons, and I'm not sure if it's necessarily worth the effort in terms of the opportunities that opens up in terms of fundraising per se. So I don't have a strong direction at this point in terms of which way that should go. I think it really comes back to the financial implications of the district and what will make what will be, ensure that the new society or corporation is as flexible as possible in terms of achieving its goals. I do think that there should be some council advisory to the board. Especially in the first few years, I think that alignment between the mandate of the district and making sure that we are setting this up in a way that will continue to achieve that will require at least some ex officio capacity. So I think that that needs to be included. I do think a re-shift of the function, so I don't necessarily have anything in particular that I'd want to see added or removed, but I think the language needs to be strengthened around the, the role of the society really is to lead development of new projects in, in my mind, from kind of that lower affordability to under-merit homeownership. I think that's the gap that we really see. I don't, I appreciate the supportive nature that this can play to the existing nonprofits, but I definitely don't want to take over or amalgamate into that space. To me, this is really about partnering with developers, figuring out how we get control over the units that come in through CAC contributions. And so I would like to see that more as a, as a clear focus for this entity, whatever it ends up being, society or corporation. I agree that the board makeup should shift a little bit from that perspective, that it shouldn't be as heavily focused on the nonprofits and have more insight from the business community and from developers in order to give us a better understanding of what it is that we need to do in order to kind of push on that other end of the spectrum. And agree with Mayor Elliott's comments in terms of the budget and ramp up that I think we need to be ambitious as we look at this. And I don't want to start by underfunding it. So how do we make sure that it's going to get off on two feet? And what are the other funding options like MRDT that we can bring in to make sure that it has has the legs that it needs in order to actually make big wins in the next one to three? I'll edit that. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Counselor French, and we're way over time. That was an important discussion.
I'll be brief. So Chair, for me, this process is on track. My preference is to have the district involved at arm's length without a voting seat on the board. So I support generally the direction that we're going with this. And I'd like to see us move swiftly. On the topic of proposed budget, is the ramp up budget reasonable? Yes. And I also echo other council members who I think are suggesting that if there is a way to increase this budget, I'd like to see us do that. And I'd also like to see us move as quickly as possible, particularly to deliver below-market housing through this organization. So in short, I support the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Hefford.
Thank you. I support the direction so far. The matter of keeping the debt off the, the balance sheet of the district, I think, is, is important. I think the, the society route seems to do that, but I'm not, I don't feel strongly either way, except for that particular issue is the biggest one for me as we are facing so many other issues with our real estate and facilities master plan. So that's important to me. I do agree that the scope of this needs to be better, better defined and that we're here to, to not only run the units that we, that we have, but we're to source out new and build new opportunities for for units in that below-market through to market and rentals as well as the, the below-market purchases ownership piece as well. And I do think that's where we should be, should be focusing. I do think that with that explicitly stating that we're here to, that this society or corporation is here to, to build new units, I do think that having representation from builders, developers is important on the board, whether that comes at the expense of other nonprofits at the table or an expansion of the board numbers. I'm not, I'm not too, I don't know how that quite sits yet. And I think that as early on in this process as we can, we that visiting, that visioning and mission statement needs to be, to be sort of crystallized so that everyone in the community can see clearly what, what this entity, whatever it is, is setting out to do. So so far, so good. I'm looking forward to the next steps. Thank you for everybody for all the work on this file so far. I know it's a challenging one.
Thank you. And I guess my comments are one, I appreciate the clarification, Mr. Buxton, that helped me understand why, why we're still looking at it as a society. My thoughts are if you go with a society like Counsel Race, I think the membership's probably a lot more important than the board, as I understand the French Societies Act. It is the members that will decide the board. And so that's maybe where our concern should be. I believe it's the purpose of a society that's really critical, critically important for setting out what it can and can't do long-term. I don't know that the purpose can change any longer. And so I think that's the piece where we need to be very clear on what is the broad scope reason we're doing this. And that may provide a fair bit of comfort to my other piece where I do think if we're going to go arm's length and want this to be successful, we should give this board the freedom to really do what it needs to do. And so I would like to see some prioritized or clear outcomes. I agree with a focus on affordable owned and rental units, probably not supportive housing. But, but as much as we can pull back the expectations in terms of, of trying to dictate what this society will be, I do think through operating contracts or operating agreements and funding, we can more specifically control specific outcomes. And so I think there's a fair degree of accountability there. And if we're not seeing what we want, we can not continue those operating agreements. And if the society is otherwise successful to its general purpose, that's still a win for us, even if we're no longer involved in the future, at least in my mind. I think for me, the debt piece of this was a big concern in whichever path we went forward in it. So it's good to hear that we have some ways around that. My other, I guess my last piece is I am hesitant about for-profit membership and governance. I think for-profit sector will be a critical stakeholder. In my mind, if the board is doing its job, it is understanding all aspects of the community, all the important players, including the for-profit players. But I'm not sure, you know, in my mind, it's the whole for-profit nature of housing that is creating all housing prices in the first place. And so, you know, I think I would really prefer to keep the membership and the purpose of the society as being very much leaning towards the not-for-profit and engage with the for-profit sector on a more of a stakeholder basis. And so those are my comments. Are there any more comments before I call the question? Okay, seeing none. Oh, actually, before I sorry. It's, it's a bit. Can I just clarify with Mr. Buxton if there's anything you didn't hear that you needed to hear before I call the question?
No, thank you for checking in, but I've got some very clear direction here. Particularly around the, the development, the development of new units, finding the next project. I've heard that loud and clear. I've heard, I think, some clarity on the level of independence that council was prepared to give. There's some work on funding that we need to do. Tightening the tightening the vision and mission. All of this will come back in the, in the purpose, the constitution and the bylaws, but I think I have some very, some very good direction to enable me to, to keep this thing moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will call the question then. Is anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I guess I will ask for a motion to terminate. Counselor Stoner, my Counselor Anderson, anyone opposed? Seeing none. We are done, sort of.